I'd like to call the air at six o'clock for the last six meetings. Workshop meeting between the Scarborough Town Council and FOSH, which is, has plans to try to fundraise monies for a hockey rink in town Scarborough. And they're here to present their plans and take field questions from the town council. So with that, I'll look for the person who's presenting.
Okay. So very quickly, for those who may not know me, my name is Chuck Bradish, and I'll kick off the workshop with a quick overview of the journey that basically got us here today. We're hopeful that this overview will answer some of the questions that have been asked today and prepare us for a good dialogue. All right. But first, I'd like to introduce some of the board members that are here this evening. Jeff Murray for fundraising, Lee Allen, design and construction, Mark Maroon, finance, and Bob Jakes, operations. The other board member that is not here this evening is Chelsea Woods, and she's our communications director. I also wanted to frame the expectations of the workshop from the FOSH perspective. We'd like town council and FOSH to align on input required to make a decision on the memorandum of understanding, right, regarding FOSH land use on Scarborough school campus. We'd like town council to specify any missing information from tonight relative to questions that are unanswered. We'd also like town council to specify if any changes to the MOU are needed, again, prior to that meeting. So our current status, we're here tonight because FOSH is at a point in our project where we're ready to kick off a major fundraiser. All right. The fundraising initiative required certain elements before we could kick it off. Those elements, we feel, are the business plan, which is complete, facility construction design, which is also complete. We've been in the process of getting a 501(c)(3) approval with the IRS for quite some time now. It has gone through the final approval process, and we're expecting approval anytime. That leaves the final piece, which is site location. We firmly believe that in order to kick off this fundraiser initiative, we really need to identify a site location. And so hopefully, tonight, we'll get a little closer to that decision. FOSH background. This all started May 2013 last year. I think some of you know this, but we'll go through it anyways. Scarborough High School boys hockey and girls hockey lost a lot of their ice time, all right, which led to basically getting ice time that's not ideal. We have a lot of very early ice times last season, and we're looking at the same thing this season. The season might actually even be a little more difficult because last season, our AD, Mike LaGage, was very aggressive and looked out for interest and quickly went out and found a lot of ice for us and secured that for the 2013-14 season. In spring of 2014, the executive board, us, we moved to six members, and that's when we first submitted the 501(c)(3), okay? And we started meeting with the town on different site discussions. Motivating factors. Again, this comes out of the business plan, but there's three primary factors. Ice availability. Last year, again, Scarborough hockey teams practiced very early. There was actually 65 times where they had to practice at 5:30 in the morning. Ice proximity, busing. When available to UNE and MHC last year, cost was about $30,000. Previous year's practices were also at USM and CCC, which basically means busing transportation's very expensive. Ownership. We have no home ice, right? There's no banners, there's limited fan access, and it's not like going to our turf field and having a home field advantage. We have no home locker room. That means the kids are lugging their bags in and out. And actually, last year, they actually had to lug them to school, keep them in the hallway downstairs, and then they'll get home. And there's no assurance ice is available at all in the future years, right? So like I said, Mike was very good and aggressive last year and got us some good ice. We're still struggling this year. Objective. An ice arena to support not just high school hockey. You hear us say high school hockey a lot, right, because we have the girls' high school team, we've got the boys varsity and JV team, we've got four potential middle school teams now. But it'll also sponsor local figure skating programs, town functions like Winterfest and just general open ice, school-based programs. One of the things, if it's local, the PE classes might be able to leverage ice for different gym classes. Community-based programs, senior, youth, open ice. But one of the other things that came to our attention, and even though it doesn't fit our business plan to keep the ice all year round, we do plan on pulling the ice out around April. But once the ice is out, there's countless uses for the facility, and we'd be very much open for that, right? So if people approach it with ideas on how to use that ice, the ice surface, once it's out, we'd be happy to entertain those. All right. Community benefits for Scarborough. Improved student access, community adult and senior access, reduced transportation costs, economic opportunity for businesses near the rink, all right? We joke about it all the time. Every time when we go to rinks, we're constantly in before to the local businesses, whether it's Dunkin' Donuts or sandwich shops. And when we leave, we're often hitting pizza places or dinner after the games. No taxpayer burden. This was something that we worked on right from the beginning, right? We had no intent to impose any tax burden on anybody in the community, and we want to stick to that. If placed on town line, town land, an extension of the town's infrastructure could be supported, right? One of the things that we've heard is that there's a town campus, right? And this would support that town campus concept. If placed on private land, it's still an anchor for local business, right, and for business growth. But, you know, emphasize this, we've been looking at a lot of property, but we want to get as close to high school as possible. It'll still help with transportation, and it'll still make it feel more like a home field advantage. And then just overall improved quality of life through better amenities, right? The rink that we're constructing is going to be a very nice rink. It's going to be a high end, and it'll just be a nice place to go to. All right. Community benefits for local towns. Improved student access, a rink to call home, community adult and senior access, reduced transportation costs, again, no taxpayer burden, improved quality of life through better amenities. So, a couple alignment questions. Because it's our sense, FOSH, we've talked about this for a while, that the town council agrees that building a privately funded ice arena in Scarborough is a good idea, right? Just in general. It is our sense that town council feels that Scarborough school campus is a good location for an ice arena. Not saying where it is, I'm saying, but on the school campus. And so, leaving that, the next question is, where do we feel, or where does the town council feel that location on the town campus would be? And with that, I close my opening statement.
Okay. Couple of things. Now, where your going to be tax exempt status through the IRS, does that also allow you, if you bought a property, you'll say, for example, off the campus, privately owned, here in the town, that still make you tax exempt from property taxes?
Yes. It wouldn't happen until the following April of that tax year.
Correct. So if you, we'll say anywhere else in town, the town of Scarborough would be collecting property taxes from you.
Correct.
Right. One of the other things that was brought up is, as far as, as far as you, in the memorandum of understanding, would you, how would it commit, how would the other towns commit to this program as far as, would they be signing up for, say, 10 years, 20 years, or no? What kind of a commitment would you expect from the two other towns?
So part of that is part of fundraising, so I'll let Jeff answer that.
We've talked to the Cape Elizabeth very specifically about this, and the way this really works with all the ice rinks really in the area is, there's no long-term agreement with any of the towns to the ice rink, but there's a functional agreement there. So for example, Gorham skates at the University of Southern Maine. There's an understanding that they get a good look at what the ice opportunity is there probably first because of their locality. Bonnie Eagle would probably fit into that same category, just like in Falmouth, there's Falmouth, Yarmouth, other towns there that are using that ice. They get first cracks at that ice. And so is there a formal agreement? No, ultimately, there's not a formal agreement associated with it. What we think is going to happen, however, is that we're going to see a financial commitment from the boosters of those towns to help us with the funding of the rink. In fact, the way that would likely work is that they would purchase locker rooms, and so they would have some ownership, some investment in the whole process, but in fact, probably not have a long-term contract with FOSH as part of the ongoing operations of the rink.
Like we were talking earlier, that they would be committed in a way that they'd be having, this would be their home ice, and they'd be installing locker rooms.
That's right, yeah.
That would be from their investment, the towns or their booster clubs' investment of lockers and amenities and...
That's correct. That is correct. That is correct.
One other thing that the public asked me to make clear is that, with the memorandum of understanding, if done, that no building would star, no land, I mean, no land, you know...
Bright ground.
Well, what I'm saying is, the land would not be given until the proper fundraising was made and you accomplished that goal with the monies that it would take to build that building and outfit that facility's full.
Yeah, I think I can answer that. As part of the planning board process, one of the triggers in the planning board process to get approval is you have to prove you have the financial capacity to actually go forward and build the project. So without having planning board approval, we couldn't start the project anyway. And that's built into the memo of understanding, the kind of those checkpoints is, yeah, we get through this, and we have to go to the planning board, that's the next checkpoint, then we have to come back to town council to get some sort of land lease agreement with the town council.
I'm just heading into the audience and citizens. One of the other things that was a concern was traffic. Another concern of the council will give us the location. So, and so this would all have to go before the planning board and traffic studies, things of that nature, the regular planning board procedures have to take place. I may have some other questions later, but I'm going to yield to any other councils that would like to ask some questions.
Yeah, I think we all do.
Thanks for coming tonight. Thanks for all of the information that you provided. As I know, I pretty much made clear to Mr. Maroon, I'm not wild about the location you guys would like to be in for a number of reasons. Traffic, it's too close to high school. I'd rather see it elsewhere on campus if we were to proceed with this. So I'm going to ask why you chose that place and how married are you to it?
I guess...
Start with the first part.
Yeah. I think we chose that place because we saw that it was a good location that wasn't in the heart of the campus, it was more to the periphery of the campus. That's what drew us to that.
Why periphery instead of...
Thinking down the road of wanting to draw interest from Cape Elizabeth or South Portland, it felt like if it was in the middle of the campus, that like, well, that's a Scarborough rink, we don't have any ownership, whereas it's on the outside, even though it's next to the high school, it's kind of more divested from the high school, giving them more level of comfort. That was our initial thinking. I don't know if that's completely still our thinking today, but it is, that was originally why we were thinking there.
And it's actually been a long process of picking a location.
Sure.
And arguably, six months, nine months ago, that wasn't at the top of our list.
Okay.
But then, as we started walking through what I call use cases of who would be using the facility, it became apparent that it was definitely an attractive one, especially from a student standpoint. Now, how viable it is, you're bringing up good points. We don't know, and that is one of the reasons why we're here tonight.
Yeah. Because I mean, I know personally, and this is just me, it's no one else in the council, you know, to me, that's a non-starter, that location, just so you'll know. Unless you can convince me otherwise.
Might I ask, why is that...
I just, I think it's too close to Oak Hill. I think, I'm very visual, artistic-y type of architectural type of person, and I think it's going to look squeezed in there. I had asked Mark for some diagrams or painting or something, and I still haven't seen it as to how it's going to look as far as, you know, facade and edifice and how it matches with the high school. But the other part of that is, you know, this building isn't being built for two years or five years, you know, hopefully, it's going to be there for a long, long time and used for a long, long time. What if the high school, for whatever reason, needs to expand? The natural place for the high school to expand may be into that direction, plus displacement of high school parking. So I've got, those are, those are the issues, you know, that I'm concerned about, just so you'll know.
Yeah, no good, that's what we want to hear, certainly.
Okay.
And to the point, so we do have renderings that we'll provide to you.
Okay.
So you'll have not only just the front view from the parking lot...
I didn't see what I liked.
But we'll also give you the views from the street, so you get a better...
Yeah, because I want to see what the...
Outside campus.
Yeah, because I can't, you know, from what you've given me, I still can't quite figure out what it's going to look like, like from the street.
Absolutely.
Or from Grandin's or from, you know, because it needs, to me, it needs to be visually attractive.
We'll get those too.
And, if I could, I got a couple of questions. My other concerns, and I'm glad to hear that you're open to use of this facility in your so-called off-season, because I can certainly see this as being a place for graduation, for example, summer fest if it rains, just the number of different uses, community uses for this facility. And another thing that I looked at, when I looked at your architectural drawings, the most recent ones, and maybe I'm incorrect because I didn't go back and look at the other ones, you have a so-called party room? And that's okay, whatever you want to call it, I don't care what you call it.
Function.
Okay, function, that's better. I know, you call it a party room, I'm thinking, these guys must be hockey fans. No, I didn't. But is it...
Birthday party.
I know, I knew what you meant. I knew what you meant. However, that being said, I've, to me, if you could have more function room or a couple of function rooms that you could offer to senior use during the day, perhaps, I mean, I'm just thinking of, I would like to see this building able to be used by as many people in town as possible, because not everyone skates. I love to skate, I'm looking forward to it, but there's going to come a day when I'm going to be too old to skate. So I would like to, you know, see other uses, and I think that it would go a long way in putting aside a lot of people's concerns about this. So that's where I'm coming from, and that's all.
If I might just address that specifically.
Yeah, sure.
So I think we have heard pretty clearly over the last couple of months, this question about multi-use of this facility.
Right.
Of course, we've come at it from an angle of looking to try to address a problem that we were facing.
Sure.
However, in doing so, when we put together the business plan, for example, we looked at the finances to see if the building would sustain itself with the needs that we had for it. But we always spoke, even at that time, about what if somebody wanted to use the building in June or July or August, right? How would that go? And from a business perspective, it's simply this, if the function, whatever that is, supports the operation of the building during that timeframe, fantastic idea. So if we came up with a, you know, soccer camp to go inside that in July, if it meets the needs and all comes out from a zero-dollar perspective, I think that's a fantastic idea. And that has been a consistent discussion internally for us, though maybe not made publicly.
Right. So that's why I ask, because I wanted you to be able to put that out, because I know I hear that over and over and over again from constituents, so...
The graduation thing, by the way, is a fantastic idea, yes.
Well, yeah, I mean, that was my first idea.
Had never even considered it.
Yeah.
Yeah, very interesting.
And to the point, we do need to identify those other ones, though, because one of the concerns when we first started thinking about use in the summer, it's a 98-degree day, well, not this year, but, you know, on a day that it's warm, will the HVAC sustain that type of thing?
Right, exactly.
So we need to clarify what those other uses might be in the off-ice time, so that we can make sure infrastructurally we have the right facility for that.
And, I'm sorry, I just want to ask one more thing, because this is my latest kick, is you, have you looked at solar? Putting solar on there, you have solar exposure to help reduce some of the utility costs and...
It's not something that we've looked at to date, but we haven't got to the point where we've started looking at design of HVAC systems either, so...
I'm just throwing that out there.
Absolutely.
I'm going solar in two weeks, so that's why I ask.
Council Benadet.
The only question I have is liability. If summoned, it's hurt in this facility. There is no way to prevent them from suing the town of Scarborough. What would you do with that?
I'd like to take that on. Actually, I've been doing some homework for pricing with part of the modeling with a couple of the agencies. I also was involved with the Cumberland County Civic Center's negotiation for the contract with their, when I was a chairman, the treasurer for the Cumberland County Civic Center, we brought back the insurance issues there and reviewed them again, because the town of Portland and the county had concerns for the same issue. Those issues have been managed through, the good news is, I was made from two companies that I talked to, that that is not an issue, there's enough protection. Anybody can sue anybody for anything, as you know. But the way you set up the not, the, and I'm drawing a blank of the exact term, but there's a, there's a procedure in the insurance that basically puts the ownership of any issues that would happen at the rink in the rink's hand. And again, that would be a requirement under any circumstances with any business for that matter, having insurance. In my business, I have nine tenants, all of them have to have special insurance that indemnify me. We would have to indemnify the town the same way. I think that's the word I'm looking for.
Yeah, we'd have, we'd, I assume, insist on hold harmless in indemnification language on top of them having their own insurance. So you do anything possible under law to insulate yourself, but oftentimes suits a castle-wide net, but that gives you very good defenses should something come forward. I think that's an issue that can be dealt with.
We're looking at very high insurance policies, not a million dollars. We were looking at $10 million and up for coverage. We wanted to make sure that if anything happens, you get, in that kind of environment, you've got to make sure it's protected. So, and there's model after model after model of these kinds of programs across the country, with public-private partnerships, that have established a setting, ground rules for that. Does that help?
Sort of.
Are you talking strictly the hockey portion of it?
Insurance.
General liability.
Or would it be everything?
Everything. When you talk general liability for insurance purposes, what I was looking at was somebody coming to that rink for any reason, or even not coming to that rink, getting hurt for any reason on the property that would be classified as the rink. Because it could be somebody that gets hit, you know, walking across the street by somebody that's coming out of the rink. It could, there's so many things that have to factor into that equation. But again, the good news is, this is not a new model. This has been repeated over and over across the country. And when I talk to the insurance companies, there's one here in Portland, believe it or not, that does nothing but, well, they don't do anything but, they have a whole division, and they insure, I think, nine of the rinks just in Maine. So we've got some solid information from them and background history.
Just as a further comment, there are particular protections in state law for public recreation, so uniquely, the town is well-positioned. Nearly everything we do, we have tremendous, potentially tremendous exposure. And that exposure really would paralyze us from doing much of what we do and what's expected of us. So state law provides for that. There's a notion of sovereign immunity, and there's also tort claims mitigation. So there's multiple layers of defense here that I think would come to play for sure.
Council Benadet, did you...
Although there might be lawyers and law firms, he shares policies and everything else, you still cannot prevent an individual from suing.
I can't disagree with that. I think laws need to be changed, but...
I couldn't hear you.
I think the law should be changed, but I can't help that. I mean, you're right, anybody can sue anybody.
So that the town of Scarborough could be on the hook.
I think Mr. Hawke could better answer that hook.
There's certainly ways to protect ours, to protect the town's interests. I don't think that, in the whole scheme of things, should be an impediment to this relationship, but I'm confident there's a way to address and protect ourselves to the fullest extent possible. I don't view that as an insurmountable task. There's some other issues that might... That's not one of them, I'm kidding.
I think it is, like, see otherwise.
Might I ask, to that end, right, is there something that you see differently in, for example, the use of this rink on the campus potentially, that would be different, for example, than a football game or a soccer game or a basketball game being played on the campus? Do those, do you see those as different entities, or do you see the same risk in those endeavors?
They have the same risk, but they're not in a situation where land is sold for less money when there's no taxes on it.
So I guess I'd see the, because the risk there is probably the same, in fact, might even be higher because than it is directly on the town itself or the school department, I suppose, right?
It's a risk that we don't necessarily need to take.
Fair point. We would be in a position potentially of insulating the town at some level, whatever that happens to be. The laws aren't, are not my expertise, but we would be in some level insulating from that with the insurance that Mark spoke to a moment ago. So is there a risk for all of that? Absolutely. But I think it exists in other walks as well.
Council St. Clair.
Okay. I just have a couple of quick questions. I'm curious, when you take, talk about taking the ice down in April, I think you said, what, as Counselor Katerina said, I'm also interested in what else we can do to use this facility when you're not having hockey games on it. When that ice comes down, what is that flooring like underneath it? I'm just curious, what...
It's concrete.
It's concrete?
Yes.
So basically, we could do numerous things on that?
Absolutely.
And it wouldn't...
You could do soccer, you could do lacrosse, you could do tennis.
Yep.
Those are all sports you could do.
Okay.
And then long-term, even if, long-term, if summer hockey camps, clinics, et cetera, et cetera, it could be where we go from being shut down to three months a year to two months a year to, you know, long-term, if, you know, the rink is capable of being opened, but short-term, you know, we know that we can only do it October through April. So that's how we're planning.
Interesting.
But it would certainly support other functions. Graduation is an interesting example of something like that, but there are certainly other functions like that that might be useful for the town or its citizens.
Yeah. I think our seniors have been lacking and have been very patient for numerous years and need some, need something, need to figure that out at some point here soon.
So may I add to that?
Sure, of course.
Okay. I would love to understand the ideas, right, so that we could better forward-looking, look at what would have to happen?
Mm-hmm.
Because we have talked about this from the beginning. We realize that an ice rink is an ecosystem, right? And it plays off the heating from cooling the ice, believe it or not, to heat the rest of the building. So we want to, we'd have to think the opposite...
Correct.
...if we're trying to keep it cool. So if we could identify what those possibility uses are, we could better look at that.
Yeah, yeah. Something for us to think about and figure out. I know you, Ed, works a lot with some of our seniors, and maybe it's something that you could bring up. I don't know. I do think it's important to mention that our varsity girls' hockey team won the state title this year. To be living across the street from one of those players, I think that's an important thing or something to be recognized, even though they did have to have some of those times, which I find horrifying. Those girls and the boys teams are, that's how dedicated they are, and that's one reason why I, seeing their dedication, I know that those, they have the kind of parents that are going to work really hard to make this happen. Having parents who get up at 5:00 in the morning, five days out of the week, to drive their kid to get to hockey practice shows me dedication. And so I think that's something to keep in mind. I think, I had a little bit of a concern where the placement was, but not, probably not, not as, not as high level as Counselor Katerina, but I would be open to seeing other spots. But I do really like the thought that those kids can walk safely to the arena and we're not having kids tromping through traffic and things like that. So I think there's, there's a couple of things in there that... couple of things in there that, as we move forward, we could probably get through. But, I think that's it for me.
Counsel Don.
I can understand that you cannot get long-term contractual commitments from the neighboring towns that have expressed a strong interest in this. A.D.s and principals and superintendents and school boards don't really have the power to enter into ten-year contracts that would bind them to a plan that the town may go in a different direction. But, what that does is it raises the question, and we've all heard and, and respect you people for the job you've done, but how do we be assured, beyond a verbal assurance, that the town won't be subject to a financial burden from this project because of you people move on, people get new jobs, people move, people grow, grow older? So, so there's all these factors that bring to, to mind legitimate questions about how do we protect ourselves against the risk of having to fund this project in the future?
Yeah. I, I think, I mean, I think this is a very fair question, right? And it's one of these where maybe past performance does not predict future results, but what I can tell you, but, but what I can tell you is what we've learned over the years. So, many of us have been involved in youth hockey and, and hockey as a whole here in the, in the greater Portland area for a lot of years. For the past fifteen, I've been coaching youth hockey, and for four of those, I was the president of a local youth hockey program. And, in those years, I've witnessed the difficulties that there are to obtain ice at times that are reasonable for kids to play hockey. Back when I was the president of the organization, I was routinely arguing with the rink manager about the fact that I did not wish to have the ice time that started at nine o'clock on a Wednesday night or Thursday night, nor did I want the 5:00 a.m. practice on Saturday morning. And, I simply wouldn't book that ice for the youth program that we ran. Now, that exists. Those ice times exist, and they're being used, sometimes for high school students, sometimes for the adult leagues and so forth that exist. But, what I can say for sure is that there is need for ice in the area. And, we've got a host of evidence. I'd be happy to share all of that with you. There's no, nothing hidden here at all. But, we know that there is needs for ice in this area, and the sport as a whole is growing. The number of participants in the sport have grown over the last fifteen years, as I've seen it here in, in my experience. And, that's at the grade levels, the youth levels, as well as at the high school levels. So, I think we'd find that there's not much concern about that, though there certainly is no guarantee about how that goes.
Could I add? So, the other thing, because I've been thinking about this a lot, too, and that is definitely it, right? So, I've been playing or involved in hockey since I was five. So, the sport is, I'm hoping, going to go for another forty-six years. I'm fifty-one, right? The other thing that comes to mind is, as we've gone under, taken this undertaking of building a rink, we've gone through so much energy to find out if it's a viable concept, right? Can we actually use all the ice? Can we actually survive, right? Can we actually go year in and year out by selling ice time and, and make it not fall into debt? I would only imagine that if another town was thinking about putting an ice rink in, whoever they put in charge of that would go through the same diligence and look and go, wait a minute, there's an ice rink in Scarborough. Why aren't you using that ice? Right? And if they can come up with a business plan that says, yes, we need that sheet of ice, which is what we're doing, and all the other sheets of ice, right? Then, I, I think, then, I think we're safe, right? So, if they do move out, and we're using all the ice, and they still need more ice, I think that's an okay thing, and I could see that happening, right? The outdoor rink in FIC right now, that's going in there because there's a huge, huge opportunity for more skaters. They identified like a hundred and fifty more players that they can get playing hockey in Falmouth by having that open-air ice arena, right? So, there was a need. They filled the need with that open air. We feel we have a need. We're going to fill it with this, right?
And curiously, that doesn't impact, that particular project doesn't impact anything that we're doing here.
Can I just ask a follow-up? It begs the question. I mean, if what you say is true, and I have every reason to believe it is, why isn't there a private concern that steps in? What, it sounds like there's money to be made. There's ice to be rented.
No, actually, that's the issue. There is no money to be made. This is a, this is a great...
Well, then it goes to Counsel Donovan's point. If there's no money to be made, it takes some level of subsidy, a partnership of sorts, and, and, again, to the point, what assurances do we have that it's a going concern, will be a going concern?
Well, number one, when I was invited to join the board for the financial side, the first thing I said as I walked in the doors, if we're talking about doing financing on this project, I'm not interested. And, if we're talking about not doing this as a nonprofit, I'm not interested. Because we know the math. The math does not support bonding, and it does not support taxes. The math supports a finished building that's set up and designed with a, a depreciation formula that is held in account to refund and repair equipment as needed. And, it has to have a smart, long-term financial vision. The, the value of ice today in this market is two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars an hour. That's what it is. It's below market value. So, when we talk about a partnership, when I thought of a partnership with the town, I don't think of it a partnership with the town as being financially supporting the process, but rather, this is a project that would never come forward under bonding. I would never vote for it under bonding, or would I vote for a pool, or any other thing like that. So, in the, in the process I went through with my head, how would I look at you and say, as a former counselor, how would I look at you and say, yeah, this makes sense, and you should believe what we're saying? Well, in the, the articles of, that need to be spelled out, that have nothing to do with the, the M-O-R-U, it will break down very specific behaviors and requirements and establishments and, and reviews from accounting, and nothing, no different than anything that we have to deal with every year. And, the truth is, with no debt, and we'll just take it right to its worst-case scenario, with no debt and minimal fixed costs, if for whatever reason, this team, which would consist of towns, townspeople, town officers, school officers, people in the, in the, in the hockey arena, in, in the hockey fields and desires, if this model doesn't work, which hasn't been seen, I can't imagine that analogy based on the math we've done. But, if it doesn't, you shut it down, you have a free storage area that somebody paid five-point-five million dollars for, but you didn't. So, I'm being somewhat flippant with it, but the truth is, the town, worst-case scenario, gets a built, building for them, if they can do anything they want with it. But, the truth is, the math carries itself fine with a tailored down, and Jeff did a phenomenal job of breaking down from the peak of February right down as it tails down to the, the last few weeks of the seasons. And, we built this model, a twelve-month model, based on only that shorter term, knowing full well that if we increase the uses, the use, insurance is insurance, that's fixed no matter what we do. It'll allow us to have more, the more we bring in, the longer we can get, the more activities we can bring in, more things are done in the summer when we're not using ice, only drop to the bottom line to secure maintenance and repair and the vision. That has to be part of the component. So, I really feel comfortable with the fact that, although it could happen, the town is in the mix of, of the team from day one. They always know what's going on. There's never a secret. You're not going to get a phone call saying, by the way, we need ten dollars to turn lights back on. Because you're there as part of the, the fast board. So, I really can't imagine a scenario with a free building, with the reserves in place, managed properly, that, that scenario could play out. Another way to create a financial risk for the town is for the facility to not be managed well. We have a very successful community services department and, and program, which is largely self-sustaining. And, are you anticipating that there'll be a collaborative effort here, which will avail yourselves of the expertise that the town has to protect the town against the financial risk of the property not being run well?
Okay. So, a couple of things. The way we've designed the board, right now, we're in, we've looked at it in two phases. So, this phase, the board is focused on what we're calling a project structure, right? We need to design, raise funds, and construct. But, post, when we switch and design transfer over to an operational board, right, they're the ones that are going to make sure that, that on a day-to-day operations within week, within year, it's sustainable. As part of that board, we will have representation from the town to ensure, right, that they have oversight and early indicators that something is going wrong, and they'll have a voice in that board. All right? Now, the other thing about scheduling, this rink cannot run without a rink manager. It's just not possible, right? It is a full-time job for that gentleman or lady, right, as well as a team of temporary people in order to keep that running, right? So, it's not a part-time job for someone. It's not the board. It's not booster volunteers, right? This is a paid, full-time job.
Just as, as an example, that most of the rinks in the area have a full-time rink manager, and they're responsible typically for everything from scheduling the ice to maintaining the building, to making sure the ice, the Zamboni is run in between ice sessions. So, they have a host of different responsibilities. Usually, one person responsible for all of that on the, I'll say, the lighter operational times. And then, when times are busier, middle of the winter, January, February, you know, when ice is being used heavily, then a part-time staff would come in to support that extra person. But, that's a very typical for any of the rinks that are in the area here, as to how they're running.
Does your business plan rely upon super early and super late hours of rental?
The way that we've mapped it out right now, the earliest ice time would be 5:30 in the morning, which is something we've talked about before. I think the latest was stopped at ten, or stopped at eleven? Stopped at eleven o'clock. So, they're off the ice by eleven o'clock. So, that, that was the way we mapped out the ice times. And, some rinks in the area go later than that, and some start a little earlier than that. Some of the men's leagues start at like five o'clock, and some of the men's leagues go in, you know, past midnight sometimes even. But, the way we've mapped things out was something on the order of 5:30 to 11:00.
I think it goes without saying, but I'll ask the, the question anyways, that you obviously will have reserve accounts for maintaining the facility and proper water. If there were a revenue stream beyond that, are we correct that no funds would ever go for the benefit of anything other than two things? This hockey rink and the town?
That's correct.
That's correct. Yeah, the 501(c)(3) is very clear, the nonprofit. Any funds raised must go back into the facility.
Correct.
Right? And, so the way our business plan cites it is that we actually have, that aside, in there for one year's poor operational, right? So, we said, listen, we're not going to expect that we sell every hour of ice, and hopefully we will, right, the first year out. So, we have that as a contingency. On top of that, the year-to-year budget, right, income and expense, applies for reserves, so that when you need to redo the roof, when you need to buy a new Zamboni, right, when your compressors die, all that has to be into the fund, right? So, that's all been taken into consideration.
Talking just sorts of obvious.
All right, I guess I'll look at work.
One thing I'd suggest...
Counsel Holbrook's joining us. Before, I wanted, no, I still have my...
No, I didn't need to interrupt. I thought he was done.
We would like to be able to come to grips with the realities of this, and one of them is the site. And, there has been expressions of concern about the site and about allowing a private entity to actually have a significant presence on the municipal campus. Is the driving force or factor for the location that you've suggested, that it has a certain visibility? And, if there were other sites on the campus, the municipal campus, that fulfilled that, are you locked into this one site, or is that a point of discussion?
It is definitely a point of discussion, right? There are, there are a couple of things that were attractive with that location, right? I mean, they're a less than a hundred-yard walk for the kids, right? That's obviously attractive. Lee brought it up earlier. We felt, and this was not expressed by the other hockey programs, but we felt that if it was on the peripheral of the campus, it would feel more like a, a public entity, right? And, so, teams coming in from out of town would feel more comfortable. Don't know if that's true. That was our, our personal view, right? And, the final one was just pure visibility, right, right there on that corner. But, we are definitely open to other, other site locations.
Would we be able to reach a memorandum of understanding agreement with you that commits to the municipal campus, but not a particular site?
I think it's likely.
I think, yes. Probably the reason why I say yes, and we are saying yes, is because I think it's, there's limited, right?
Right.
It's not like you're going to put us in a place that is completely undesirable. There is not an undesirable, and, and Tom has mapped out a few there for discussion, so, yeah.
And I ask that because I think it's this, this sort of discussion, you have to get a consensus amongst a group of people. That's why we hold these workshops, so that we can talk about it. And, so that, that probably would facilitate things tremendously if we weren't bound to come to a commitment tonight on that, or tomorrow, or next week.
Yeah. To be clear, I, I think that this group's opinion is that we were looking for a working arrangement here, one that benefits the town and what, the goals of what this organization has, right? Ultimately, that is some of the things that Chuck spoke to earlier about available ice, the location of the ice, the proximity of it, and the fact that we think that this supports something good for the, for the town, for the school, to have something that we would consider to be home ice, just like we have a football field or baseball field and a gym for the basketball players. All those things are good, and they have value. I think this has the same, whether it sits immediately next to the school, or whether it sits in some other location on the town campus. That all said, those things are all very appealing because the kids get out of school, or before school, whenever it is, but they walk to and from just as they may with any of their other activities. And, that makes it very valuable to be in this location. You know, if it doesn't work, then it doesn't work. But, you know, that's, that's the view of this group.
Something that I think has been raised by a number of people, but I think is, hasn't really been touched on since then, is, do you have the ability to tell us and the public what the value of the benefits are of having dollar value, of the benefits of having this facility on this campus? And, I ask that because the proposal that has been made asks for a, a minimal rent. But, what I'd like to understand, and I think the public wants to understand, is are we saving enough money and, and creating benefits for the community that far exceed whatever the rent would, fair market value, rent would be?
Yeah, I think the way that probably balances out is in this way. Originally, we built a business plan that suggested purchasing land at a private location. That was initially the intent. Once discussion started with the town, obviously, that changes the equation a little bit. And, and it becomes part of this larger discussion that we're having tonight, which is where we may have started with a rink and for the benefit of the hockey players and so forth. We, that's what we saw initially, but we start to see this broader piece, as we've talked about tonight, that benefits the community further than just some number of, of hockey players that we can count up and, and speak to. So, then, we start getting to this discussion about costs and benefits. Well, I don't know that we can always put a dollar figure directly on it. I can tell you what we put in the budget, what we were going to pay, you know, what we thought we might pay for land. I don't know whether it's accurate or not accurate, because we don't know what that piece of land might have been that we might have purchased. But, when we start looking at the value associated with it, and whether there's a realistic expectation that, well, this place that we've spoken about putting the rink, if that would ever be sold, I can't imagine that it would. So, is there a value that can be put on that land? I don't know. I, I get into a, kind of a circular discussion there, I guess.
So, I, I think, yes, there's, there's three pieces, right? So, the, the cost of land, and you could basically say, that could possibly be divided over thirty years, right? And say, that might be a, a lease number, right? The second one is the busing transportation, right? With that busing transportation not having, that is a savings. There's, there's no doubt that that is a savings, right? The other one is potentially, we have identified a large... The other one is potentially, we have identified a large yearly maintenance fee, right, for plowing and, and clearing and weed whacking and all that. Depending on where it's located on the campus, maybe part of that is a common area, and so some of that funding would be less, right? But we'd have to look at exactly where we ended up and who was going to account for some of those yearly expenses.
What have you estimated is the savings to the school's transportation budget?
So generally speaking, we've discussed numbers that range anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000 as, as the cost of busing for the three high school programs for practices and home games, which essentially goes away if the students are doing this right on campus.
And, and that money is presently not in the school budget? That money is presently paid for by fundraising?
The ice times and bus costs have changed over the course of the last few years. The boys' hockey boosters, the girls' hockey boosters have had to put in different amounts of money for a variety of different purposes over the last few years. It's been a changing endeavor as the school budget has changed.
This, this particular year, though, we will, it's been very clear that we will have to pick up all practice busing, the boosters, Jeff being the president of the girls and the president of the boys. But all the home and away games that will be traveled to is still being picked up by the high school.
Okay. How much is that?
I don't know that I have a clean breakdown of that, that split.
And, and it'll, it'll be different this year, right? Because one of the things is, we're hoping to find ice locally for our home games, but that has not been nailed down yet, so the schedule of home and away games has not been identified. So if we're traveling a great distance, that expense is obviously going to be more.
Are there middle school teams presently?
Yes.
Do they incur transportation costs?
All, the, the whole middle school program is not a sanctioned program, primarily because if anybody understands club hockey, club hockey basically uses up a lot of the kids' time, and so they're rarely required to play on Sundays, and that is one of the rules that students can't play on Sundays. And that is when middle school hockey is played, is on Sundays. So it's the fault, the boosters pays for the entire program, even the insurance associated with it.
And parents.
And parents, yeah, sorry.
Move the, move the kids to and from.
Good. Thank you.
So I, my apologies, I have a word. Some of this may have already been gone over and why not, so, but here's my 11th hour Q. A. I, I'm happy to hear that you're considering other locations, that it's really been a major hangup of my own. No matter how I slice it, no matter how I look at it, it's buildable land, and clearly your project shows that that land is vis- is buildable. And if I've learned anything over the last couple of years, you know, Wentworth is a prime example of what happens when you do not have opportunity to expand on site. So the high school location in itself is extremely limited, you have a cliff on one side, you have a pay road on the other, there are only two directions for that building to go. You know, I, I would be warmer to the concept of some kind of an agreement in a different location. The other thing that I would like to kind of talk to you about in brochure view is to be considering alternatives, because no matter how you slice it, I don't think your business model is going to change in that you're asking for some type of land and low-cost rent. That is unique in that we don't normally do that, not, not since my time here. Although we have had projects along the way, there is some type of return in investment. For instance, our broad-term projects, the return for the taxpayers' investment is that there are new taxpayers coming into the system. So, you know, yes, we have land on ponds that has some preservation, but there is a return for investment. Same thing with the library, the library is another identity I can really identify with. The return for the investment is during regular business hours, anybody in this town or, you know, anywhere walks through the doors. You have a very limited scope of who you're benefiting. So what I'm going to ask you is to think about, how can you broaden that scope so that there's a better return to the public's interest in it? So look at those summer months, you know, what do you have for your space, and this goes back to what I was saying, what can you be to be more of a community center, not just a hockey rink? If there's an offsetting cost, you know, community services pays for, you know, space and programming, is that something that community services can do in the summer months in your off season? So again, you know, the, the more you can make a positive as far as what you can bring into that building, it's easier to go to the public with and say, this is your return, this is your benefit.
Pretty well covered.
I didn't say, I'm sorry.
But, but at the same time, we're, we're not complete yet there, right? We need some, we need some collaboration back and forth of what those opportunities might be, because we want to ensure the facility is capable of sustaining that type of opportunity.
You know, the other thing too is, you know, perhaps there's a greater opportunity to do more. And I know you were limited with your space before, you know, that was something I had brought up before about being interested in, you know, we've talked for years about a community center. If you're on a different location, maybe it's a partnership, because there is room to have, you know, some kind of a meeting space in there, or, you know, so if you're not tied to that space, there's more opportunity. The last thought I had was, and I think I made the call in print this week.
Just once?
Just, yeah. I, I would really like you to spend some time, and it was something I brought, certainly we're not looking to hold a referendum on this, but we did explore what are some opportunities to kind of engage the public to find out what the community feeling is for this. As a counselor, that's going to be important to me, because I don't think, even if you expand your usage a little bit, what, you know, what's the public good? I'm struggling to find that as a counselor. I, I don't doubt or negate that it benefits the hockey teams and the programming for that, but it is a limited group, so to explore some options, maybe it's a non-binding question through the November election, it's a simple process of printing some papers, asking what the community feels about it, do you support having some kind of a hockey program? Maybe it's, you know, we can engage the poll on the website, I mean, there are options for that. Maybe to explore what the community sentiment is a little bit as we come along with this process, so.
Councilor Bennett.
I just have one quick question, as I'm, as I'm listening, I initially heard that the busing was $30,000 last year. And now you tell us that we're going to be saving the town $30,000. If my mind serves me correctly, half the games are at home and the other half are away. So you're only saving half the transportation cost.
On the game front, that's true.
On the game front.
So $20,000 to $30,000, where did that come from?
So, well, the biggest we've received are from Mike Legage, right? Mike has been providing us with the figures, the, the exact breakdown. If you look at it, the game to, the game to practice ratio is, what, probably three, four to one?
Other way around, right?
Right, so four, four practices to one game.
Yeah. So when we look at those dollars, right, I mean, it just do some really simple, you've got maybe 10 away games each year, 10 home games each year, but you probably have 40 to 50 practices each year. So there's a dramatic number more of practices. So if you think about that, from a transportation perspective, if you don't have to bus somebody to 40 practices, for example, and you don't have to bus them to 10 games for the home game portion of things, all you have left at that juncture is the 10 away games. So the 10 away games still exist, no doubt about it, we still have to go to those other locations, but we've potentially saved that 40 to 50, well, in that case, maybe 40 practice plus 10 home game transportation ease for the varsity team. Also would be true with the junior varsity team, and then for the girls' varsity team. So I don't know that I have all those numbers exactly right, but it's on that order of magnitude at least that you're, you're talking about.
I can understand that, but I think that the, the, the public would like to know it that way, too. I know nothing about hockey. I don't even pretend, okay?
Is that too late?
As you can see by my transportation cost, I look at it, you know, I look at it as half a home, half for away.
Yeah. So, and that's true when you speak of, say, the soccer team, for example, right? Half of the, half of the, half of the home games are here.
Fifteen years in high school.
And so-
That's exactly how we look at it.
And so when my son plays soccer, he leaves the school, he goes down to the locker room, changes up, and they walk down to the field, and for every home game, they do the same thing, and they grab a bus when they're going to Gorm or whatever other town that they're going to for an away game. That could be true of the hockey program, if there's a ice rink here at the town campus. With the way it is today, every time they go to practice, and every time they go to a home game, and every time they go to an away game, they always have to take a bus, because there is no ice here for that, for any of those other purposes.
And it's similar, because we also get on the emails of the swim team and the swim boosters, they also have the same situation. They need to bus the kids, right, to, to their practice, because there is not a pool on the, on the campus.
But I think in, in your memory of understanding, you should put stuff like that in there, stupid people like me, that don't know a damn thing about hockey.
Thank you. Counselor Blais, did you have something?
Yeah, just, just a quick item on the busing. You said before that the boosters pay for all the busing for practices. School only pays for busing to and from games, right?
So what Jeff was saying is, this has changed over the years. I've been booster president now for a fourth year, and I never heard anything about busing dollars three years ago, because that was covered by the school. What I, what I ended up paying for was ice time and socks and some jerseys, but as the school budget has been challenged, that has changed. And in the last two years, we've gone to picking up the practices primarily, primarily because it was off-hours, the 5:30. You can't get school buses that are picking up kids to also taking the practices, so we picked up those funds. But there was enough funds in the, on the school AD to cover some more ice than you normally would on the busing side, so we picked up busing and he picked up more ice. This year, that has changed again. We have not only busing, but also ice.
So you can't really identify a number for us?
We could, we could work with Mike-
It varies from year to year.
It does, it truly does. And, and again, if we end up having all our home games, then let's have fun, Toronto.
It's not much different.
It's going to be, it's going to be very expensive.
Is the building good at the air conditioning?
In the winter.
In the winter?
Sorry, sorry, that, that's one of the questions we have. So when we were looking at HVAC, and now we're going to have to really study this because to extend it to more opportunities off ice time, we got to look at the HVAC system and determine, in order to make that a palatable climate, what's it going to take to make that happen? So we may end up going with a HVAC system that has air conditioning.
You ought to also send some sort of a estimate on the flooring. Took the ice up, and you're going to have a hockey, a cross or soccer.
$1 million.
$1 million?
Price of flooring, so it's probably not in the budget.
To protect it, you mean?
Put floor in a-
Oh, over-
That's over ice.
Over ice, over ice. These say off-season.
We're talking about off-season.
I think what you're saying is protect-
In the summer.
It's not for, it's not for-
Yeah, but you're not, you're not going to put kids out there playing soccer in the summer.
It'd be turf.
Okay, one other question. You're running this thing in the wintertime from 5:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. You're talking about Scarborough, South Portland, Cape Elizabeth using it, and you're also probably talking about possibly other schools coming in and getting ice time?
Odds and ends, ice, also men's league, figure skating.
Okay. But my point is, this 5:30 to 11:00, you're saying, hey, you know, there's time in there for the public. Is the public going to get to 5:30 a.m. and 11:00 p.m.?
Actually, they get pretty good hours.
So, so I mean, I, I think there's, there's, that's an item that ultimately gets decided by the board that runs the rink, okay? And to be clear, that includes somebody from the town of Scarborough, somebody from the school department in Scarborough, and somebody from, each from the school boards that we would be working with, presumably Cape Elizabeth, maybe South Portland, right? So as well as three members that are ad hoc members, so just to be certain of that. Ultimately, they will decide that, but the way we have penciled in the, what I'll call the community ice, is midday ice throughout the weekdays as well as on the weekends.
Counselor St. Clair.
I, I might have missed this, and if I did, I, excuse me, I apologize, but who's maintaining this after this is built? Like, we're going to need janitors, I'm assuming, and people that do the Zamboni, Zamboni, right? Who's, who's dealing with those people after this is done?
Right, so every facility, and we've visited a great deal of them, has a rink manager, and the rink manager will not only maintain the facility, but do any hiring that he needs, whether it's temp hiring or any permanent hiring he may need, to everything from cleaning to painting and maintenance, right, to rink managers, right, that are going to be out on the ice during public skating sessions, so in running the skate sharpener, all those activities. So he will be responsible for his group of people.
And he reports to the board?
What's that?
He reports to the board?
Yes, we, the board, will hire that individual, right? And keep reviews on it.
Thank you.
Counselor Mead, your call?
Well, I was going to try to wrap things up, so-
I, I just got one quick comment. I, I just haven't heard anybody talk about the unquantifiable savings that's out there, and that is, you do have a number of young people. I used to be a teacher, and I used to teach kids who played hockey and did ice skating at god-awful hours of the morning and night, and they were falling asleep in class. So, I mean, I just want to point that out, too, that if kids are more able to focus on their education when they're in school, that's very helpful. And that's a savings to the taxpayer in the long run, so.
That was big on my list, just, just the comment that, I, I don't see how you can get a kid out of bed at 4:00 a.m. and expect to run a program, and then have them go into school and, and perform well.
And not fall asleep.
And their purpose is to perform well. And, and since, and, and the option is not drop hockey, as I, I think that we're long past that one, then I think that that's a very strong reason to, to have a rink where you could have reasonable access.
Mead, your call.
Yes, I was just going to say, Chuck started his comments earlier, kind of raising two questions and thinking he knew the answer, and I think he did. The first one was, is this a worthy endeavor, a good concept? And it sounds, from the comments, it is. And secondly, is there room on the campus to support it? Equally, from the comments, it sounds like there is. The question still begs, of course, is where on the campus? And so there has to be some sort of process going forward to sort that piece out. Just for the council's benefit, this comes back to your agenda next, next meeting on the 15th, the memorandum, memorandum of understanding. I've made some notes in terms of four or five possible additions or clarifications in that document, based on what I've heard tonight, and there may be others. So I just wanted to prepare everyone that this will come back to you officially and be ready for your consideration, either with amendment or without. And I'm pleased to work with whomever to come up with possible amendments to improve that document, so it's to everyone's satisfaction.
Okay. We're all set. In closing, I'd like to say, members of the public, and that are here tonight, welcome to comment on what they heard tonight at this workshop podium during public comments, during the council meeting. And I'd like to address everyone at home that sent emails in. They weren't ignored, I read every one of them, I didn't have time to respond to close to 15 emails in the last several days concerning being in favor of supporting a hockey rink. So there's been a lot of emails sent in, support the separate, and I'm, I'm not ignoring them, I just want to keep them know that the constraints of time, my time, I haven't been able to respond to them. So with that, we'll take a five-minute break as they set the mics up for the council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. You're welcome. We've got some good answers and-
Yeah, I'm not-
I think we're going in the-